Good evening. We're just going to call to order the meeting tonight. And we're going to enter into executive session at 7:41 to discuss procedural 2.1 contract matter, 2.2 contract matter individual employee, 2.3 negotiations matter, BHAA, 2.4 negotiations matter, BHTA, and 2.5 district matter safety. And that's at 7:41.
Do you need a motion?
Oh, motion, yes.
Second.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. We'll see you shortly. Hey, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:41. We entered into exec session at 7:41. We discussed 2.1 contract matter individual employee, 2.2 contract matter individual employee, 2.3 negotiations matter, BHAA, 2.4 negotiations matter, BHTA, and 2.5 district matter safety. Can I ask everyone to rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'm just going to note that we're entering into public meeting at 8:13. And any comments from the public can be heard at this time? Nope? Okay, we just would like to give a revision to the agenda tonight for new business 10.4. We are adding that we're authorizing Petri Berha as representative to the West Pot meeting. And we've authorized him to vote on our behalf. And may I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda as revised?
So moved.
And a second? Thank you. They're in here.
With gratitude.
All those in favor? Yes, thank you so much. Am I doing this now? I guess, I guess I'm also assigning, I'm sorry, to the committee, we're doing that now too, assigning Melissa as PTSA rep, I guess, to the committee assignments for this year as well. So can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
A second? All those in favor? Thank you, Melissa, and thank you, Petri. And then can I please have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda personnel 6.1, consent agenda 7.1, 8.1? May I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second? Although we're moving. Thank you. And can I have a motion to approve new business tonight? The assessment report. Are we going to hear about that first?
Board goals.
Board goals first.
Oh, board goals. Where do we see board goals?
Unfinished business.
Oh, unfinished business, sorry about that. So we have board goals tonight, 9.1. Yes, thank you, Jen. Oh, I just wanted to say too, hi everyone and welcome back to New School Year. We're very happy to be here.
It feels like it's been months.
Yes, it does.
It really does.
Well, we're very excited. Okay.
Yes. So the last time that we were here, we discussed adding a few specific items to the fiscal accountability and communications. In the current year, we talked about facilitating board financial work sessions and engaging constituents regarding health insurance plans and options. I'd like to also add, conduct quarterly financial reports from Kelly and Susan to take place in public sessions. Those would be our goals for this year. Okay? So I will add that. And with that addition, is there anything else the board wants to do? Or are we prepared to?
Hold on, I think we're good. So we're going to take, can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda 6, 7, and 8? An unfinished business, did we do that already?
We did that.
Okay, sorry. So we're just doing unfinished visits, 9.1 board goal, sorry.
As amended by?
As amended by?
Second.
As amended by Jen, correct.
Sorry, who seconded?
So a motion and a second. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, everyone. And now we're moving on to new business presentation, assessment report, and is that Tim, right?
That's me.
Yes, thank you, Tim.
Let's get this up and going. All right, so it's time for the annual assessment report. I want to summarize the assessment data from last year. So this is covering the 2014 school year. The data is not official official yet. The state goes through a process where it will be verified by school districts and it won't be officially released until November, the final results. But these numbers generally don't change for us locally. So I'll give an overview, I'll stay sort of high level to go through this rather quickly. But please feel free to interrupt or stop if you want me to revisit a slide or go a little deeper or answer some questions. So we'll start with just the overview of the levels on the 3 through 8 ELA and math assessments, as well as the 5th and 8th grade science tests. It's on four levels. So when we talk proficiency, we're talking of students who scored a level 3 or 4. So when I mentioned the percentage of students scoring proficiency, that's levels 3 and 4 on these slides. So we'll start with the ELA results. And this is the breakdown, looking at grades 3 through 8 here. The number of students are up here. These are those performance levels. So here in the yellow section is the percent of students who reach proficiency. That's levels 3 or 4. So you can see these numbers. In context, they might not mean a lot by themselves. So let's do a comparison to last year's, for example. And then I'll do a six-year comparison. So this is just showing the change from last year. And you can see in ELA, all of the grade levels increased except in 8th grade, although that was already fairly high, at 91% reaching proficiency. These are really extraordinary numbers. And then we'll look at the sixth year in just a moment. One thing we'll notice, 3rd grade's a little lower. We'll tell that story in a moment about what that looks like and what that means. This chart, I'll explain it, you'll see it again for math. We have the years up here from 2018 through 2025, with the exception of 2020 and 2021. I'll explain why, we didn't have those assessments down there. The boxes up here are showing the percent reaching proficiency change from 2018 to 2025. So if you look at grade 3, we had 73% proficient in 2018, up to 75% proficient in 2025. To look at a few stories, what we're seeing at Wampus here is starting to see a trend that seems to be shifting in the upward level at the elementary. Do recall, we're entering our fourth year of focusing very intensely on literacy at the elementary levels. This could be in part some of the influence on these scores. I wouldn't say it's the only factor. There are several things we're doing simultaneously that I think are influencing the scores. You see here, in 5th grade tells an interesting bit of a story here. For many, many years previous, even prior to 2018, we had fairly sluggish scores at Wampus, sometimes going up and down, sometimes peaking, sometimes valleys, but never real consistency. And we've talked about it extensively at these meetings. Now we're starting to see this upward trend here in 5th grade. We're seeing it in the 4th grade. 3rd grade I'll talk about on another slide when I look at the cohort data. But we're starting to see a consistent shift here with our focus at the elementary on literacy, having experts come in and really looking at what we're doing and educating our entire staff on the research behind, the research in literacy and how students learn to read and what curriculum and instructional strategies we need to implement in order to see that change. Megan's been following through with that at the elementary level, getting in the classrooms and really being hands-on, helping teachers actually do what we're talking about with our consultants. We're seeing fairly consistent, sometimes in state testing data. It's one assessment. You're going to see sometimes a peak. You might sometimes see a drop-off. What I try to look at is where are we generally in these grade levels? For example, if you look at 6th grade, we're generally in the mid to upper 80s with maybe one peak here in the 90s and one little dip here at 77. But overall, we're looking for that pattern. This is just year to year, so these are different groups of students each year. So it could be different. What I like to look is cohort data. This is following the same group of students from one year to the next. That really tells the story about what's happening with those kids. And if you look here, we see in every example of the cohort data, you're seeing an increase, which is what we hope to, and a fairly progressive increase as we go through the years. And that's what we want to see. Because we might, even if we are low in the early elementary grades, the idea is, are we providing the support and building the foundation, giving students any background knowledge that is a gap between where they should be by the time they get through middle school and are ready for high school? Because that's our goal of the 3 through 8 tests. Where might there be some gaps in student skill level or knowledge? And how do we address that? So some of this is speaking to the importance of our reading specialists who give that intervention when students are below proficiency. We pull them out, we give them extra instruction based on some assessment data that we provide. So that's the ELA. Let's look at how we compare to the state. This is a slide we look at every year. We're about 30% above where the state is. That's probably about where we should be on this.
So the state's the same on the 3, 4 data, even though we're different? Because I was trying to figure out whether maybe it's the state data that's running down the grade.
Yeah. So if I look here, Scott, to your point, this is probably a little below where we should be, although we do, from that cohort data, catch students up eventually.
Right. The question that I've always had about this is, what's most important is where you end off. And I don't know if it's possible if the trajectory of the way that we teach is just slightly different than these tests and nobody in the world is going to say that these tests are absolutely perfect in their progression? Or is there an issue with our, you have 3rd grade instruction? How do you know which of the two?
Which is why we have to look at trends and patterns as opposed to just one year, because it's, you know, because it could just be a variance. I think we're--
Would you say that in 3rd grade, it's the first time they're actually sitting for something like this? So it could be stem, and there's so many factors. It could be fear of test, like there's so many things that can go into 3rd grade. Because it seems like we ramp up heavily after 3rd grade. So I think it's, I don't think an 8-year-old is equipped to really sit for that long and really focus and have so much information.
Yeah, there could be several factors. I don't think there's ever one reason why a score is, which makes like that? So I would say, I'm going to predict we're going to see a tick up a little bit in the next few years in 3rd grade because of the shift in our phonics program. I think that could be part of it. We do catch students up at Wampus now, but I think we're going to do that faster. Because our new phonics curriculum, if you recall, it was K3. We're now adopting, we're piloting this year, that K2 phonics curriculum. So students should have all of that instruction by the end of 2nd grade. And we have, we've adjusted the type of interventions we're doing in K2. So I suspect just those things, if, you know, if I had to predict, might influence us a little bit and be one of those factors.
So Tim, can you go back on the slide?
Sure, this one, this or the?
So that cohort that's 5th grade, that's got the lower score.
Here?
So that's also the cohort where 5th grade was the first time they were taking the test, right? Like they didn't have--
The previous two years, they did not, you're right.
Two years. They're also, they were also in that like peak developmental stage during COVID. And look how much they jumped.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is incredible, and that's a great--
Once things stabilize for them, that's amazing.
Right, so these students didn't have testing because of the COVID year and the year after, and then go right into it. So that wasn't a surprise. We were a little concerned, but the intervention that we provided those students over those years got them to where we needed them.
And they made the biggest jump.
Yeah, it's amazing. So that's why the cohort data is really important to look at. Seeing, you know, are we eventually building up that skills with kids? And their middle school experience got them to where they needed to be. So it's a great story. So these are the types of things we try to uncover a little bit and understand the nuances of what's happening in our curriculum. This is students with disabilities, which I like to just look at, and we've seen an increase over time. I put the N for the last year because it's important to note, these are low numbers. So if we have 27 students, 10% would be about three kids. So if three kids reach proficiency, that would jump 10 percentage points. So that bar would suddenly look really high. So we have to just know that it could be one or two kids that make a difference in these bars. But we are trying to have more students with disabilities reaching proficiency, and over time, the trend is upward.
Oh, that's where the number's the percentage, not the number of kids.
This here is the percentage. At the N I have for this one here, just to illustrate that these are low numbers. And then we, this is 6 through 8. Also very low numbers here. So two kids would make a 10% difference in that bar. So we, I just try to look for general trends in where we are with the students with disabilities. We'll look at the same type of charts for math. We see here in math with the level proficiency, which are pretty extraordinary numbers just in and of themselves here, most of them in the 90s, even 3rd grade. We were looking at the literacy being low, but the math is high in 3rd grade here. This is the change from the previous year. So while we're seeing maybe not increases here, those are pretty high scores to begin with. Let's look at the six-year trend from 2018 on. And again, we're seeing more continuity here in the mathematics. We've had our mathematics curriculum in place for over 10 years. I think that is, so we understand that curriculum and have been able to fine-tune it over the years. So we're seeing fairly consistent here, a couple dips here. Up in the middle school, those results are just off the charts to me. Middle school's really high in terms of the math proficiency on the state tests. Looking at cohort, similar patterns here, all positive. This is that group of kids, Mia, you pointed out, that didn't have it there, but they were a little higher in math. And we know from some of the historical research looking back at the COVID years, that literacy was hit hardest, and math was too, if kids weren't in school. Because they didn't have anyone at home really helping with math. Where parents tend to read to their kids and talk to their kids. So that's just interesting there. But then again, we got them up to where they need to be. I like to point out this last one here. I included Algebra 1 in 9th grade because our goal, again, with the early grade levels is to build up that skills for students who are falling below and any gaps there might be. And this just tells that perfect story that here with this group of kids, they're 18% below proficiency, so we provide that academic support. Then it's 15% here, and then it goes down to 7%, providing the support to 4%. And then our goal, 100% of students reaching proficiency in high school. And that's the story of what we try to look for in the data, that we're eventually getting all of our kids to the point where they'll be at that achievement by the time they reach high school. And that line just illustrates that really well. Again, comparing the state data?
47%.
I know, in 8th grade, so that's a big change. I also look for trends, our bar's going at the same up and down as the state. And in math, we defy it a little bit. We see that from 4th through 6th grade, it's, the state is going down over time and we're staying pretty consistent. The state goes up here, we go down a little, which tells me we're overperforming a bit here. So, but we're where we need to be in terms of the state. Students with disability relatively high, getting those kids to achieve on the test. And this is the 6 through 8. And we'll take a look at science. Remember, the science standards are in the process of changing, so the 5th and 8th grade tests are in their second year. And we'll take a look at 5th grade, we're in the second year of that. So this is what I expect when we have a new test. We always underperform a little bit, and we start seeing an increase over the next few years as we start to learn what the state's looking for on the new assessments. And this tells that story there. We went up 11 percentage points with level 3 and 4. And we saw an increase in the top performance here, which is nice. In 8th grade, you won't see that. We stayed about the same here, but we did get to proficiency up 8%. So that starts to tell me, pinpoint a little bit of the work we need to do is looking up at this end and how we get kids boosted in 8th grade science. But how does that compare?
And those are the lower numbers too, that 8th grade? Because it's not the, it's not kids, it's not kids who took Earth science.
Right, so these are the students not taking in our sciences. We don't double test them. And this is how we compare to the state. So while maybe the numbers aren't quite where we want them to be, we're still almost double what the state's average is. And then we'll take a look at Regents exams at the high school. Do recall that as we're transitioning to new Regents exams, we're going from four performance levels to five at the high school on these exams, so we'll talk about them. And recall that level 5 is the same proficiency level on all. Levels 1 and 2 are the same, but the state has different percent range or different scaled score ranges on levels 3 and 4. So we'll take a look at English. This is the last, this was the last year of the old exam. They're actually changing to a new exam this year. I expect this to be re-normed a little bit. The scaling was a little lower this year, Dwayne said, based on the previous years. I think the state's starting to re-norm even the old tests as they get to the new test.
I guess one fundamental question about this--
That's where I can't answer.
About a lot lately? All these tests constantly change. I was just having this conversation with somebody at the collegiate level. I'm like, if you look at your chemistry class at the undergraduate level, how much has it changed in the last like 15 years? Chemistry hasn't changed that much. Why? Why does it constantly change? And I guess the question, especially now that we have maybe a little more flexibility around the regions, like are these great changes and it's all headed in the right direction? Or are these changes that we fundamentally don't think are going in the right direction? Because maybe we have a choice, and maybe they're great, maybe they're not. I don't know, I just, I don't understand for the life of me like the pace of change.
Yeah, it's fast. That's why, if you look at the 3 through 8, I only went back to 2018. That was because before the state, the tests were different. They can't be compared, so I dropped off those. And then they had changed several times. You might recall, if you go back and look at my old assessment reports, I have notes about when they changed and you're not supposed to compare them. Remember, 2011, there was the Common Core standards were released. So that came out, and the state revised all the tests in Common Core. And then they revised them again because they rewrote the standards to be their own. So there is this constant level of change. But going to things like in science, for example, the science standards haven't changed since 1996. The language standards haven't changed since 1996.
Okay, that's a long time.
Those were due to be changed. I went through two or three levels of changes in mathematics in, from 2000 to 2008. Remember, doing the math A and B, and then those changed again. And I think math has changed five or six times. I think because the state didn't get it right. And they changed it again. So we'll see with these, I don't know. The state is--
What's happening to English?
Yeah. Yeah, they're just revising the assessment, which hasn't changed in a while. I don't know, we'll go see.
They were also norming it differently, weren't they?
Yes, so they're norming it, and we'll talk about that in science. They re-norm it as well. So that means they recalibrate their scaling to the five performance levels. So that's why we're seeing some shifts as well. And you'll see that in some of the others, I'll talk about that. This is algebra. This one's complicated. I'll start with over here, 8th and 9th. These are our typical students in 8th and 9th grade together. So this range is a little bit lower in the last few years. Lisa said this was normed lower than previous ones. So when I get in November, when the state releases this data officially, I can get some comparative data, and we'll see where we stay in the region. That'll tell a little bit more insight into it. And I'll certainly share those slides with you when I get to that. So 8th grade, we expect this. This has been relatively predictable with our 8th grade students who are accelerated and take Algebra 1 in 8th grade versus 9th grade, combined at 70% there. But we're still getting, we're still getting 100% of our students to pass the assessment. And then these are students who take Algebra over two years. So those are those students who just need a little more time. So that's just explaining that complicated graph. But I wanted to break it down for you so you can see the difference. Still fairly high scores. And in the region, we tend to be toward the top in the state of, in the region. Science, so I'll start with chemistry. That's predictable because this is the old assessment, which we've seen many times. This is about in line, actually a little bit higher than the previous year. We went up a point on the average. This year will be the new chemistry Regents exam. This is Earth science and life science with biology and Earth and space science. These were new Regents exams this year. Heard a lot from the feedback from students and from parents. It was a harder assessment. The assessment was really challenging. I stood there and read through it. I talked to Chris, who was a former Earth and Earth science teacher, talked to the teachers about this. There's tons of reading. It's all application and transference of knowledge on those assessments. They're very different in terms of the design. And again, these are standards that hadn't changed for over the generation, you know, since the 90s. These tests were fairly similar. So we're seeing a shift and seeing a re-norming. So Jen mentioned the re-norming of this. These were normed a lot lower than we're used to. If you look at biology, the proficiency level is about where we always have been in biology. What's different here is we're used to seeing more kids at the top. It used to be just level 4, now it's level 5. State's adding a little more discernment at the top on the Regents exams. So we're seeing the shift. I predict over the next couple of years, we're going to see the shift upwards. That just is the pattern I've seen on all the new Regents exams. So I'm sure this will start to go up, and I'll compare that and we'll look at that as we analyze the tests and we understand the nuances of the new test and how to help kids make sense of that transference of knowledge. Every question on that exam, on both of these Earth science and biology exams, involved critical thinking, higher level thinking. Our 8th grade students usually finish the Earth science exam in an hour. Every kid went up to three hours on that. Angela called me, and it was two and a half hours. She goes, that single kid has not finished yet.
Is it like an AP?
It's there, that's interesting you said that. Because teachers who have taught AP courses said these questions were written like AP exams. Yeah.
College board in there?
College board type of, it's all application, it's a lot of reading. There's a lot of executive function that occurs because there's a lot of flipping between pages. It'll be the problem, and then there'll be five questions flipped over multiple pages, and you have to keep flipping that. For some kids in 9th grade or 8th grade that have some organizational issues, that can be challenging.
It's interesting because the portrait of a student is changing, and they're making these exams more rigorous? Yet they're taking them away, right? Aren't they being phased out over the next five years?
Not phased out, but they're disconnecting it from graduation requirements.
So they become optional?
Less important.
Do we have any data on how other districts performed on these tests?
I do, yeah. And we did fairly well in comparison. Not everyone jumped in on that first year. We did, because we've been studying these standards for a long time. And because our 8th grade science test the year before, students did fairly well relative to the state and other districts, we felt we were ready for it.
So what happens to somebody's grade with this? Does it not penalize the grade?
Well, we had to make a change.
On, well, we had planned, whenever we were doing a new Regents exam, that is unknown, we don't count it in the final average unless it helps a kid score. So we had that policy going into this. We're doing it in chemistry as well. It will only help a kid. We're not going to let a state changing its norming hurt our kids. So that was something we decided to do.
Kind of like the AP, it does a factor into their final grade.
Yeah. The state has always--
It's how we let it if it helps.
Yeah, we'll let it if it helps. So if it helps and a kid deserves the higher grade because they aced it, then that's fine for these kids that scored up here. It rarely helps because it only, our practice is that it counts as 10%. So 10% rarely changes a grade.
Can't the teachers determine, like, wasn't it up to 20%?
It used to be at one point. We started to phase that down. The state actually recommends that you don't use these in factoring a grade because they're not designed for that. But we always felt, teachers tend to feel it helps kids stay motivated toward the end, as like a final exam. And if it doesn't count, they might not give that time until--
Do they go on a transcript mandatorily?
We do put it on the transcript, although again, with Earth and Space Science and Life Science, we might make it, we're, let's just say, we're looking at some options.
Got it.
We haven't decided. Chris is going to announce at the principal's coffee--
Yeah, I mean, if you're applying at Binghamton, they know about this. If you're applying somewhere else, they have no idea.
So we're not, again, we don't want to hurt kids because of this new test that the state normed a lot lower, and we didn't expect that. And they're releasing very little--
And it's a new test.
Yeah.
And it's up.
They've released, the only release in preparation for this, 15 questions. Three sets, like there are three problems, each having five questions.
So there's no way to practice either?
Yeah, it was three. And so the chemistry was the same thing, and I wrote them and asked the state, and they said, no, we're not doing it. We just not. Okay. Yeah, so it's a bit of a bummer.
Yeah.
Global history, geography, and US history, you can see this. These are in their third and fourth year of administration. And you can see, we went up five percentage points on level 5 here, just in that year. This test has been in place three or four years now, and you can see, we did get those numbers up over time. So they tend to shift as we start to learn it and know how to incorporate some strategies. And we have more practice problems to deal with kids. Because kids need to see what's being expected, and teachers need that as well, so that we can help get kids ready for this. And just a few other factors of success. So that's state testing data, which again, is just one measure on a given particular day. You don't want to put everything into that, but what are some other things that lead to success? Talking about the college board and AP. I like to just show a little bit of what's happening with APs. This is our distribution of scores for all the students who took AP exams and where they score. Most of our kids getting 3s, 4s, and 5s. And we'll see that on the next slide over time. So this is the percent of students scoring a level 3 or better on an AP since 2018. Fairly consistent. Maybe a dip there, a peak up here. But besides that, really consistent scores over time. That's a total of 794 exams taken by 369 students. And let's just dive into one, let's look at history. We'll look at two exams here. So this gives us a little snapshot. This is AP World History. The blue bar is the 2024, and the red bar is 2025. So we can see the change. And then the national rate is in yellow. So you see our students going from 45 to 60, and yet it's 15% scoring level 5. And this is level 3 or better. And that's the national AP World, and then the same for AP US History.
It's interesting that there's such a difference on World versus US.
I know, right? Yeah, yeah.
It's a big difference.
It is a big difference.
Yeah.
It's a little easier to understand the United, like, Euro history.
No, it's worse on the--
Oh, it's worse on the--
It was worse, yeah. That's why it's harder.
Speaking of my own--
Speaking of my own knowledge, I think that would have been flipped, but I don't know.
We can do a study here, we'll all take the exams and see how we do.
That'll be interesting.
I'm going to substitute my kids in.
So there's a little dive into some other things. Let's do a couple of curricular priorities, one is that our kids stay as adorable as ever like these kids. Isn't this just precious and why we wake up every day and come do this work?
I know my colors.
I know, so, yeah, let them stay at school and I'm taking pictures in their face and they smile like that. So just a few things I'll highlight, this is my curriculum review cycle, so these are all the things that are in some phase of review. The things I circled were a few things just to highlight, I mentioned our pilot of a phonics curriculum K two. That's what we're looking at here, we're implementing that, we studied it last year. We'll see how that goes, we also have an assessment we're looking at that we're implementing, which will be a phonics symphonemic awareness assessment. And we are starting to look at our wonders curriculum, which was adopted in twenty twenty during the pandemic and we want to see, make sure now that we've spent three years studying literacy, does this align with what we know to be the best practices in reading and writing? We are looking at science programs, I've talked about No Atom. We're in our third year of piloting No Atom, but we want to look back to see if there's other programs since we started looking that are aligned as well. It's a great program that gets a lot of excitement from kids, I've talked about it here, I've shared some examples. But it is a, not fully aligned in New York State, it was developed in Massachusetts. So we have to start doing a lot of cutting and pasting now and that worries us when I start doing that, I feel like we're going to lose some continuity in the program, so.
Massachusetts has better scores.
I know, it's a, it's a good program, it's a good program. It's just, it's, it's, yeah, not aligned to New York, so there you go. And then our MTSS, we're going to hear more about MTSS next month in October's. Colleen and Megan will come talk about what we're doing around MTSS and special education's role in that. At the high school level, I'll talk in a, in my next, my staff report a little bit later about artificial intelligence. So we are deep into learning and implementing some, some work around AI and I'll talk about that in a moment. We think we finally landed after a fourth attempt on a dashboard that is exciting and I have to thank Kevin for diving deep into it, he loves this stuff and has really helped understand it deeply and is now we're working with our principals to understand this work. And then continuity and consistency in our curricular programs is a goal that we're reflecting back on in terms of making sure classrooms are similar across grade levels and across common subjects so that our kids are getting the same experience and high level of curriculum alignment. And then coming up, so next month we'll talk about MTSS, we'll have our curriculum conversation with a subset of our administrative team. We'll also talk about artificial intelligence next month and we'll have an update from Lisa on the math department's work and what she's doing there. Coming up in November, Megan will join us to dive deep with Peggy and Dave and dive deep into the elementary curriculum. And Dwayne will come in for a state of department on the English department. And we can ask him more about the new Regents exam and what he knows about. Parents can visit our website for curriculum updates. This is just going a little deeper on the October fourth meeting for families watching who want to tune in. And I'll save talking more about artificial intelligence till my end of the meeting today and give you more of a detailed update on that.
And that's where graduation will be coming this year.
It's booked.
Oh yes, we're not, we're not doing that again.
Not messing around with the outside, right?
Not a ninja.
Thank you, Tim, so much.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
That was great.
It was great.
Okay, so we're going to move on to ten point two, the NISBA annual meeting and voting on resolutions. We should have all received, the board received a communication from NISBA about the annual meeting that's coming up. And then I guess we added ten point four, I'm going to skip over ten point three for a second because we added ten point four, which I don't know if we necessarily, whatever, we're open. So we're going to go to ten point four and we're going to, as a board authorize Petri Burma, who's our delegate at this annual meeting, which will take place on October fourteenth, I mean, I'm sorry, October sixteenth at four PM. So we should be able to look at the resolutions prior to that and, and go over them and ask Petri to vote on our behalf and we're going to authorize him to do that now, so can I have a motion to do that?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Petri.
Thank you.
And then now let's.
Much, much gratitude.
Yes, let's go back to ten point three, the New York State report card.
Sure, so New York State released the New York State report card, I have a few slides on it just to give you a high level overview. You do have the actual report card in your packet, if you'd like to look at it for those watching on TV this evening. It's on the New York State website, you can access all of our report cards and all of our data. So this is the accountability measures. This data, by the way, is going to twenty-three, twenty-four, so the state, the report cards tend to be a year behind.
I'm getting.
So this triangle is just the type of support the state offers, these were changed and updated recently. We're at that lowest level of support, meaning we're in charge of our own local improvement plan, that's called local support improvement. As you go up, there's a little more controls and mechanisms the state's put in place to give you oversight. So we're down here, we have always been down at that level of support. They did have added some indicators and made some changes to the formulas, this is the elementary and middle school accountability measures. So they have five items where the state has accountability and there's formulas within this. So if you access this on our website, you can click on this, there's links behind here that give the actual calculation and examples of how each of these is calculated by the state. It's a complicated formula for each one. So there's the core performance, there's weighted average achievement, English language proficiency, student growth in attendance. And at the high school level, these three are the same, then there's graduation rate, attendance and career of college readiness and civic readiness. Again, the, the measures are complicated, but all of the measures have a level one through four, four being the highest level. So I'll give you just a snapshot of some of the things on ours. Overall, all of our indicators or most of them are level four, so we're at the top, nothing to worry about. We do have a subgroup that's level three in some areas of growth, achievement and absenteeism at the high school level. By subgroup, the state looks at any subgroup that has more than an N of twenty. So if there's, it could be students with disability, it could be English language learners and other subgroups in their categories. We did not meet ninety-five percent participation rate, if remember ESA requires, the federal legislation requires that we have ninety-five percent participation on our assessments. So I'll give a bit of an explanation, so at the elementary and middle school level, we had ninety-four point three. That's still trying to get the opt-outs to go a little bit.
Right.
So it's close, it tends to be more at the upper levels in seventh and eighth grade, you see a lot in eighth grade. Where parents don't want to fight with their kids anymore to take the test, so it's harder to say, no, you're going.
So the opt-out was introduced a while ago, is it, it's still there?
We still have parents who do, but it's, yeah, there's still some.
And it's a, it's a, it's a legal thing for the activity.
Yeah, it's no more sports.
And sometimes there are students who have extended time and, and parents are actually looking at that and saying, do I really want my child to sit for six hours?
Yeah.
I'm going to just choose not to make you take that test.
Gotcha.
Right, so there, there are some like pretty legitimate reasons in there too.
Okay.
Right. We, if a parent ever calls.
I have some talks around that, just to explain, like, the stamina of test-taking, that's just a skill in and of itself. That builds up so that when you have to, you know, a lot of colleges are going back to ACCs and SATs, so that stamina is really important to build up.
It is, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we try to educate the community about it, we, we, I used to track the opt-out numbers back when we had a lot of them, it was a moment in time that was a movement. Our numbers have definitely improved, so we're close there, that's, ninety-four is pretty close. There's still districts that have fifteen, twenty, twenty-five percent opting out, we don't have those numbers. In math at the elementary level, we had a few subgroups that we didn't meet that threshold, but overall we did. This is going to be some explaining, so in math at the secondary level, we only have forty-two point seven. Here's what's happening in math and I knew this, this was coming eventually and we've had this show up on other report cards. COVID actually interrupted this, so there was suspension of the requirement for a while. So this is the first time we're going to see this show up and we'll have to start thinking over the next few years what to do so that the state doesn't have to intervene. The reason is the state has a waiver to not double test, we don't have to double test in eighth grade, so when we accelerate students. So in math, we have students in, in eighth grade who take the math eight assess, assessment, that's the required test. However, if we have accelerated students taking algebra, the state has gotten a waiver from the federal government that we don't have to test in both of those. We can count that algebra toward the middle school accountability. But what happens now, you can't count that at the high school as well. So since the algebra one for those accelerated students doesn't count for the high school, it counts for the middle school.
So the federal high school requirement isn't met.
The federal high school requirement is not met because we don't hit the geometry or algebra two Regents exam.
Got it.
And we're never going to have ninety-five percent.
Right, so that's sort of what's happening there, so.
That's interesting.
Two quick solutions is that we make kids double test in eighth grade and then we can carry the algebra over to the high school if we double tested. Meaning everyone would take the math eight and then the algebra kids would have to take the Regents as well.
It's just about taking it, it's not even about proficiency level.
So we could just say, sit, write your name, answer a few questions and move on or just not even care, but we don't really want to do that, so we're not sure, or the other option is we give the geometry, or two Regents.
What does the state do?
I don't know, because we have, I don't know, I can talk to some of my colleagues, we'll get to this position.
We don't give the geometry to you.
Yeah, it's an interesting question.
But COVID interrupted this, so we started the accountability and right when we were going to get to it, they stopped it all and now they're starting it again. So I have to look into this, there are options to count AP calculus.
That's where I was going, you know, why not?
The state allows for that, but there's some nuance to it and you have to get approval and there's something in that agreement is that it has to be the same cohort of kids or given to everybody.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I, I don't know the details, so I'm going to call the state and have a conversation about this and ask what some options are. Statistics won't count, it's just AP calc would be the only one that the state right now.
Because that would fix the problem, but not if you forcing every single person to do it.
Exactly, yeah. So that's the nuance of it and you have to get permission from the state to do that. So I'm going to do some nosing around and see how we can try to address this or if, even if we need to address it. The question is what happens if I just don't address it?
Right.
Will we just get slapped on the wrist every year or will it become a problem and then they make us do some corrective action and they want to address for three years? That's, we don't want that.
Right.
We'll, we'll, we'll work through this, we have probably a couple of years because it's going to be three years in a row of not meeting the criteria that it becomes a problem.
Got it.
So we got to play around with that a little bit. But back when we made this decision about two thousand thirteen, I think it was, we sort of knew this was coming at some point. So now we're two. So that's the accountability, the report card's available for your review if you want to dive into the details, I think there's more detailed accountability numbers. If you have questions about how it's all calculated, we could dive into that a little bit as well.
Can you stay on that picture for a second, I'd like to set apology between Scott and me. Look at Scott, he's looking up.
This is Scott, oh yeah.
And look at me, look at me.
Jen is, where are you?
I'm covering my head.
You're, where are you?
She's in the yellow, I'm afraid, I'm in the yellow.
Oh, you're in the yellow, oh, there you are, you're there.
Only one.
And then you've got, is that Melissa?
I'm taking photos. I just don't want to lose an eye.
Tim, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Lots of nuances and asking a second.
Yeah, a lot of fun stuff to unpack and cover and dive into and there's never singular.
A lot of successes and, and a lot of using proven scores.
Appreciate that.
We had to ask, just did we skip this because we received this from a.
Oh, yeah.
Is that considered, even though it was from the, it's a communication?
Yeah, it is.
To that, okay. So I just have to go back one moment.
No, it's at the end.
It's at the end? Oh, okay, all right, so we got to start, pardon, sorry, it's been a while since I've done this. Okay, thank you, so we're going to move on, thank you so much, Tim, we'll go to super, the staff reports, superintendent.
All right.
To Jen, please.
So we have some exciting news.
We just started.
You with me, Tim, you might have to.
It's always exciting news.
So we first have some national merit semifinalists, we would like to congratulate. Blair, Angelina and Amanda. These are three seniors who are named as merits in this merit scholarship program. Remember they represent the top one percent of US high school seniors. There are about one point three million students who are involved in this, took the PSATs. And now they will be announced in February to see who the winners are. The finalists will be announced in February and then the winners in the spring, late summer, right? So congratulations to those students. The next, this is really exciting, ten of our student musicians were selected for Westchester County area all-state ensembles. They were selected for more than six hundred students and they're going to perform in October, I think it's October thirtieth, right? At the Performing Arts Center in Purchase College, so congratulations to those students. We had some really nice press releases to share about them and just so much happening in our music department with so much more student involvement than we've had in years past, so we're really seeing that program grow. Congratulations to our teachers and to Mark Beja for all the work that you've been doing to share that. Here are the names of our students and their specific ensembles. Just for a second, there's a lot of them.
I love them.
All right, next, we're going to see another name here, Angelina's here again. She was selected to take part in the Armac Outdoor Art Show's public art installation. You've probably seen these through towns in different places, I mean, her piece is absolutely gorgeous. And as an English teacher, I'm proud that it's in front of the North Castle Library. And it will be there through September twenty-eighth as part one of twelve installations around Armac. So it takes some time to go around and see those, especially Angelina's at the library. And we look forward to seeing our student booth at the Armac Outdoor Art Show. Which is pretty, I mean, as we all know, this is like a nationally known art show. It's one of the biggest art shows, the fact that we have a student booth there is pretty amazing. Thank you to our art teachers and to Mark Beja again for the work that he's doing. Next we have. All right, global scholars, we had three students who earned top tier in the Ben Ferenz competition. So first place, we had Evan, who did a window through time, this was a digital tribute to Cambodian photojournalist. We had second place, Zabel, The Pages They Couldn't Burn, also mixed media. This was a diary of, I'm sorry, of poems and sketches in the voice of a resistance fighter. And third place, Teddy, But Went On, it was a collage inspired by the Nanjing massacre survivor and symbolizing human perseverance. And to see them with their pieces on the next one, Tim, is really pretty amazing. So congratulations to our three students and the work that they did. We went last year to the globe, what did they call it?
Global Scholar Showcase.
Showcase. We went last year and it had every single student who was involved in all of the pieces that they did. Students were presenting to us what their inspiration was behind the piece, what, what person or movement they were really trying to exhibit and they were outstanding.
It was intense, I didn't expect it.
I didn't either.
But it was all on this theme and it was, it just, people came into the learning commons and just became almost like us. I don't know, it's this intense.
It was really great. Yep, and we'll invite everybody again next year. And then my very last student highlight is, this is just pretty, pretty amazing. You know, you've probably heard me talk about Hudson in the past, but Hudson was recognized in Bedford and New Canaan magazines, eighteen under eighteen for his entrepreneurial work. Which I will say has everything to do with Hudson and his entrepreneurial work. This is, remember, he is a, a young, he's not in high school.
No, he's very young, I saw it.
This is like a kid who's doing this pretty much solo, right? And remember, he founded Yala, which began with the idea during Passover of working with pizzerias, donating thousands of money to, thousands of dollars to charities. He's got national media attention and he just likes to give back to the community and it's a recognition. And I have to say also, because I went to one of the events that was at NYX in Armac and just really great community support for him and the money he's raising for really good causes. So Hudson, congratulations, we're really proud of you, eighteen under eighteen.
Amazing.
Pretty amazing. And that's it, go Bobcats.
Go Bobcats, thank you, Jen, anything else from you, Tim?
Yes, I do have a few things. First, I want to tell the board that you have the, our administrative goals in front of you. Next month, we'll have some administrators coming in that dive deep into some of these goals. So if you have any other questions about them, feel free, this is an incredible document that we work on over the summer at our administrative retreat, put together and really helps guide our work going forward. So pretty impressive document, we'll take a, a look at that. I'll post it again in the board packet next month as well as we prepare for that conversation. Three things I just want to give a brief update on, the Parent Academy, Advanced Learner Program and the AI Toolkit. So we'll start with Advanced Learner Program, here's some data for us to look at in terms of how many students we are addressing in our Math Advanced Learners. So in second grade, we have a push-in model. So our advanced learner teacher in mathematics, which is Pu Cheng, is able to. So our advanced learner teacher in mathematics, which is Pu Chong, is able to reach a hundred and ten students by going into the classroom, working with students either in small groups and helping the teacher as well. And then also has some pullout where she worked with thirty students over the course of the year. And then in grades three through five, it's a total of eighty students in that pullout model in grades three through five as well in the Advanced Learner Program. And you can see more information on our website about the advanced learners. And just because I like to give us a little problem to work on, so if you need something to do tonight, here's a math problem that the fifth grade students had to solve. So if you had one hundred light bulbs all lined up in a room, and they're all off, and the first person comes in and flips them all on. The second person comes in and goes to the second light bulb, and then starts flipping every other switch. The third person comes in, flips the third one, and starts flipping every other switch. And that goes on and on for one hundred people.
I got a, I got a piece of paper for that.
So.
We don't need it, they have a whole. Scott, he has a whole animated thing going on.
Yeah, then you can do.
If you scan it, right?
Exactly, right. So how many light bulbs will be on after the hundredth person enters the room, and which light bulbs will be on?
Amazing.
So if you go to that, a student in fifth grade was so inspired that created a website where you can actually toggle and play with it, so you can look.
That's awesome.
So that's a fifth grade problem in advanced learner math. So if you have a fifth grader at home and you wanna try a problem, or any math student, or yourself, give this a try. Keep people busy for the evening. So there's a fifth grade advanced learner problem in math. Humanities, we have a pullout program where we have twenty students. Have been, we're in the enrichment for humanities in grade three, sixteen in grade four, twenty-three in grade five. Also, our enrichment teacher in the humanities has Encore as well, so all students cycle through Encore. I have a few examples, you can see some student work there in third grade, they focus on national parks. It's one of the areas they focus on. In fourth grade, you can see conventions and innovations examples, so there's some things there to look at as well. I wanna talk about our Parent Academy, so I'm gonna thank the Byron Hills Education Foundation for supporting this innovative approach to bringing our parents together to learn around specific areas. So we have three categories and multiple workshops within each category this year. The idea is to give parents some knowledge, some strategies that they can use at home, and resources around these areas. The areas will be literacy, executive function, and digital wellness. And our first one's coming up on September twenty-ninth with Carolyn Strum. The title is How Children Learn to Read and Why It Matters. She's been guiding our literacy work over the last year and a half at K-5, and she's actually come to the high school. She just presented at Superintendent's Conference Day for English and Special Education Teachers at the middle and high school. Her knowledge is incredible. She is a researcher, a practitioner, she runs a dyslexia clinic, and she teaches at NYU. Her knowledge base is incredible, and she is really guiding us in terms of understanding how students learn to read and write, so that we can make informed decisions about our curriculum and our practices. So I encourage you to scan that QR code. You can sign up for this, and you can also see all of the workshop series throughout the year and sign up for all of them. And we'll be sending blasts, you might have received my first blast about this one, so.
And I wanna give a shout out to the preschool association who've been pushing this too, and we're really excited to welcome them to, to join us at these district initiatives.
Absolutely.
And this one's gonna be really, hopefully.
Yep, they've sent this to all the preschool association, and they're welcome as well, as we get kids ready to come in and learn to read and write.
And they're sending out the flyer like crazy, Tim.
They're great partners.
Yes.
They always have been, yeah.
They've been terrific, right. And finally, let me talk about artificial intelligence. So I wanna give you a little background on what we're doing and introduce our toolkit that I spent last year and this, this summer writing and getting it ready for this year. So we know AI is having an influence on industry, on almost everything, and will, whether it creates jobs or you will need to understand AI in future jobs. It's, it's just becoming so ubiquitous at a speed that was really unpredictable. So over the past two years, we've taken a deep dive. I've been studying it since the moment OpenAI released it, and just like, what is this about? We've been going to webinars, attending webinars, to workshops, we've been reading about it. Dwayne and Kevin have been early participants with me to learn about this. We've been engaging teachers over the past year, diving deep into it to learn and apply it. We're collaborating with our administrative team on what needs are, and we conducted student focus groups last year. So in our focus groups, Kevin and I ran student focus groups at the high school. Some of the things that came out of it is that they use, like, how do you use AI? So you're asking them about that. They use it to study, they use it to generate ideas, they will help it solve math problems, they'll create study guides for themselves. They do, some of them said we do busy work, you know, it helps us do the busy work. What we got out of that meeting from them, they were very honest with us, we brought in different groups of students, is that they want guidance on the boundaries of using AI. Last year, some teachers were talking about it, but not everyone. So they said we need guidance because we feel like we're cheating whenever we use it. So we're starting to engage in what are the parameters around AI. So as a result, after studying this, I've created an AI toolkit and guidance document, which is on our website. And I'll give you just a quick peek of that, find it here.
Tim, were you, I'm just, I'm thinking about the, about when these kids go on to college, and the colleges have very different rules.
They do.
I know, restrictive rules.
There, some of them are strict and some are not so strict, some of them.
It depends, it depends on the course, every, every syllabus has a different.
Every professor. Yeah.
Some can't have anything in the class.
So I think we, we have to be careful to, that when we're teaching these kids what the guidelines are, that it's specific to Byron and that when they go to college, they need to check with every single teacher.
Exactly.
That is why they get college, it'll be changed again.
That's true.
So that was my attitude last year when working with the administrators, is that I don't know if I can come up with guidance that we all apply. It's very different. For example, our art teachers are very much against using it because the AP Art exam says you cannot use AI in any part of the process, even to brainstorm or generate ideas. So they're very much like, why am I gonna teach AI if that's the case? Whereas Dwayne was an early partner with us and thinking this through and doing some work last year with his department, and has created boundaries, and I'll show you. So our attitude was, every department at the high school is gonna create their own guidelines. We just are gonna require that teachers are explaining it to kids and setting up the guidelines and letting kids know what those boundaries are. Kids are asking for that, they need that.
They will be different by course.
They will be, they just have to be by course.
Even by discipline, by course, right?
So on our, this is our toolkit here, and I have an introduction which talks about our vision and guiding principles and things like that. Then the section for students and families where we talk about appropriate use. So if you click on this dropdown, and you'll see each department here at the high school is developing their own guidelines. Some are still in the process of doing it. Someone like Dwayne in School Counseling and Health and PE, and also Social Studies have guidelines developed now that they've worked through. So you take, let's go to the Social Studies one and look at that. This is like the English, this was modeled after the English department, where you have acceptable use. Here's ways kids can use AI, and we'll tell you that. You can look up background information, you can fix spelling and grammar. Again, teachers might set their own parameters on specific assignments and say, for this assignment, you can't use it at all, or this assignment, you can. This, these here will be areas where kids can use it, but with permission.
More than bibliographies and citations, I mean, talk about saving like a small lifetime.
Exactly, right. And then we have unacceptable use. These are things that it's not, you're not allowed to use AI. This is gonna be a, these documents will be fluid. We're gonna keep updating this document regularly as we get more information, as AI changes, as we get feedback from kids and families and teachers. And then there's some things here. I like this section that the Social Studies came up with. Before using AI, ask yourself, am I using this to support my learning or to replace it? Will this help me understand the material better or just finish the assignment faster? So we're trying to guide kids on some of these questions that I think will then give them the tools as they go to college and be used to adjusting based on their professors' requirements, instead of just a clear-cut rule, no AI, or yes, you can use it, or you're not. Because I sat here and tried to create guidance, I'm like, I can't tell every teacher how it's gonna be used, it's gonna vary.
But Tim, you also had some very, in this document, some interesting examples I found really interesting about how each department could use AI. And I found there was one, maybe you were about to go to that, but like, Social Studies said something about creating a scenario where you have a conversation with a historical figure or something.
Right.
And I, I just found like the idea of coming up with an assignment with AI, and then a kid could use that as a platform to create a project, I thought.
Exactly, so I think it might be down here under the elementary examples.
That was, that was really interesting. Yeah, like, right. That's what it was.
So in elementary, we're not so much having students use it on their own, but guided by teachers or how teachers might use it in the classroom. So we came up, this was with our teachers, I sat with them, and we came up with examples. And some of them are like that, like you could say, let's pretend we're a particular historical person and ask it questions, and AI will do that. And that's sort of a fun way where you're looking at a particular book, and you know, what might this character do? And you can have AI interact with you.
I love that the teachers are learning how to use this, you know, sort of appropriately and creatively also, help the kids, guide the kids also.
Right, so we gave examples in different areas as well. So this guidance is meant for educators, it's meant for families and parents as we're all learning it. And we'll continue to update this as we learn more.
This looks wonderful, thank you so much.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years of work thinking about it, it was a little overwhelming at first. I took a dive into state documents at other school districts and have been part of webinars, and I just look at these documents, think, where, where are we gonna start with this? So it was a little overwhelming.
It's an evolving platform, I mean, it's just evolving every day, yeah.
Tim, this is an excellent test to start.
I wanted something interactive, I didn't wanna put together just a paper thing that we sit down and then it's printed, it's, it's our thought website, we can easily update it, and we'll continue to look at it next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Awesome, awesome work. Okay, so moving on.
Nice, Tim.
Yeah, just very briefly, I know it's getting late.
Yes, thank you.
I just wanna update you on the turf project. The only thing we're waiting for at this point is the ball stop netting that surrounds the field. Unfortunately, there was a delay. We should receive that by the end of this month, and it'll be installed by the first week in October.
And it is amazing.
Yeah, the field is.
The field is great.
Well, today, we had some baseball happening on the baseball field. We had four different teams who were practicing each on half of a field of the two turf fields. There was, and the tennis kids were running the track at the same time, right? So, I mean, talk about like fully utilized. It could not have been more utilized. Every space was taken this afternoon, it's great.
Even without the netting, they can still play games against other teams, like.
They can still play, yeah, they can.
They could, yes, they, they're able to.
They will.
Someone has to bring a good ball.
Yeah.
That's the problem, that's the issue.
They did say they will bring extra balls.
Yes, they will. And then quickly, the water project, we're doing a walkthrough with the vendor on September thirtieth, so the end of this month.
And this is for the chlorination?
Yep, for the chlorination at the high school. So we'll have some more information after that in terms of timeline. It's likely gonna end in probably the January timeframe, because again, we're doing it as, during the school year, right? We're not disconnecting that, that water, we're just building it and then we'll reconnect it at the end.
And that's at per state regulation.
Health Department.
Health Department regulation, okay.
And just to clarify, Kelly, that even though we have not had PFOS levels above the amount.
Yes.
Because we do not have the little seeing eye in the tank, because it, they couldn't find it, we can't find it anymore, and it can't be replaced, that we are still using the bottled water at the high school.
Okay, that's it for me.
All right, thank you so much. Anything, Gina? Okay, uh, thank you. Onto board, board reports, anything for anybody? Yes?
Uh.
Same as Patrick?
Nice.
Um, I was at the PTSA meeting on September ninth. It was years of deja vu that came flooding back with similar conversations and repetitive questions. But they, you know, they're full steam, with all their usual activities in the buildings, teacher breakfasts, back-to-school nights, book fairs, school pictures, bus safety week. They're pushing off fundraising membership. The, they would like to use the high school's concession stand during football games and other sporting events in an effort for their fundraising, for their fundraising efforts. They may speak to some of the high school clubs also to get volunteers, and maybe kind of split the proceeds for club use and also for PTSA fundraising. Fundraising, so that's yet to be, you know, yet to develop. And one thing similar to what we're doing here, they're gonna speak with the student government about getting a student representative to join their meetings.
Mm-hmm.
I like that, that's great. And Petri, that reminds us, we are waiting for our students at the high school to see who's going to be on the student council, and then we will have rotating members as our new board members, so we're all gonna have to scrunch in a little bit.
We're excited for that.
Melissa, you won't be a member?
Yeah! It's to me. Where are they giving here?
Yeah.
Oh, we're next to Jen.
Forward today.
I'm trying, Melissa was trying.[1753.91]